Welcome, everyone. On the agenda tonight is ZDO 275 for floodplain management. But we always start these... Are we okay?
I don't know.
Are we recording?
Are we recording?
Yes.
Awesome. So, we always start these conversations off with an opportunity for public comment on any topic that is not on our agenda. So, if you would like to talk to us or share information about anything that's not related to floodplain management tonight, now would be a great time to do that. We would love to have you if you want to give your testimony and get out the door. Otherwise, we will move into the public hearing on floodplain management and you'll have an opportunity to testify then as well. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an issue not related to our agenda item tonight? Seeing no one, we'll keep on moving. So, we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing for ZDO 275. I have a little bit of a script to read, so I hope everyone will bear with me. The public hearing is now open for the consideration of ZDO 275, a legislative proposal to amend the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance. The planning commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision on this matter. The Board will conduct another hearing on this application on January 9, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started anew and additional public testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10 p.m. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of that additional hearing. We're hoping to finish it up tonight and we won't be going until 10 o'clock, so... So, the conduct of the hearing. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. The Planning and Zoning Division will give a staff report. We'll have an entry into the record of any additional correspondence received. We'll receive technical information from other government agencies. There will be testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations, hamlets, or villages. Testimony by any other person. Closing of the public hearing and the planning commission will then have a discussion and take action. If you wish to speak tonight, please fill out a form and submit it to the administrative assistant, Darcy, over here. There's a green form in the back. If you have any questions, Darcy can help you. Please state your... When you come to the table, please state your name and where you're from or who you're representing for the record when you come to the testimony table. Okay. So, those are the logistics. With that, we will move into the staff report. Jennifer, take it away. Thank you.
So, I'm just going to start with a few general comments regarding the postcard that was mailed out and a couple of other items. So, first of all, I think most of you are probably here tonight because you received a blue postcard in the mail. The planning commission is becoming very familiar with these mailers. So, first of all, to clarify, the county is required, under state law, to send notice to all potentially affected property owners if we're going to do something that rezones property. And by rezoning, it's a very broad term. It doesn't literally mean that we're going to change the zone of your property in most cases, but if we're going to do something that would limit or prohibit a use of property, we have to let people know. So, in this particular case, that involved roughly 6,000 postcards being mailed out. We are required to include the language on the postcard that talks about how it might reduce your property value. The county has made no determination that anyone's property value will or will not be changed as a result of the postcard, but we are legally required to include that information. If you own property inside city limits, this does not affect you. So, there was a glitch in the mailing. It went to some people who live inside city limits in floodplains. So, those that have called, Steve or Melissa have gotten back to them and explained that. But if anybody's here tonight who is inside city limits, this does not apply to you. Now, your city may at some point be making similar changes related to, you know, their own floodplain changes, but this change does not apply. For most people, this is not changing the actual location of the floodplain on their properties. It affects only the Sandy River Basin, and they'll talk... Melissa will talk about that in a little more detail. The mailing went to everyone in the floodplain in the county because there are changes being proposed to the floodplain management ordinance itself. And in some narrow respects, it does change what can be done with property, primarily based to something called... Based on something called critical facilities, which is things like hospitals and schools and emergency facilities. And again, we'll talk about that more in the staff report. But it's... There are fairly narrow changes for anybody who isn't in the Sandy River Basin. If you are in the Sandy River Basin, then the question of how that affects you is very property-to-property specific. In some cases, people are moving out of the floodplain. In some cases, they're moving in. In some cases, the elevation of the 100-year flood has been recalculated, so it's a very property-specific assessment. What else? Let's see. So, in terms of this, this is a little bit different than a lot of legislative amendments that come before the planning commission in that you really have very little discretion in this case. We don't get to decide what the floodplain maps say. That mapping is done at the federal level. We adopt it, or we don't get flood insurance for the people who live in our county. So, it's a fairly simple equation when it comes right down to it. The mapping is done. FEMA has adopted them. They're taking effect on January 18th. They're... Again, Melissa will talk, or Steve will, about the public involvement process that got to this point and the appeal periods that were provided, et cetera. But the county itself doesn't change the floodplain maps. As far as the proposed code amendments, there's a little more discretion. Most of the edits are being required by FEMA or through the State Department of Land Conservation and Development as a result of their relationship with FEMA. At least in one respect regarding these critical facilities, you have some discretion on whether you want to do that or not, but essentially, the rest of the edits are required. So, for people in the audience, if you do have questions, I know Steve and Melissa try to answer as many of them as possible before the meeting. If you do have property-specific questions about the mapping, then I would encourage you to contact Steve. If you have the blue postcard, the contact information is on there, the telephone number and the email for Steve Henchka, and he'll be happy to talk to you about the circumstances on your individual property and can certainly do that in advance of the Board of County Commissioners' hearing in January. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Erns. She has been at a planning commission meeting before, but she has never been before you. You may not all have been here when she was here. She's been here not quite a year, so she's one of our two new senior planners. So, I know you'll give her a very warm welcome. Take it away, Melissa.
Hi. Melissa Erns here with the Planning Department. So, we have our PowerPoint here for ZDO 275, map and tax amendments to the floodplain management district. County planning staff are recommending two categories of amendments to zoning and development ordinance, Section 703, the floodplain management district. First, the adoption of updated floodplain maps for the Sandy River Basin, and second, floodplain ordinance tax amendments that would apply to the floodplain countywide. Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance, Section 703, regulates development in the floodplain and is modeled after FEMA's federal regulations for floodplain management. The floodplain ordinance includes siting and design standards for floodplain development in order to ensure public health and safety in the county. In order to remain participants in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, the county is required to periodically update the floodplain ordinance and associated maps. Participation in the NFIP allows property owners in the county's floodplain to receive federally-backed and subsidized flood insurance. The last time the county updated the floodplain maps was in 2008, so this is the newest mapping as required by FEMA. The NFIP is an optional program for local governments nationwide. However, participation in this program ensures that county floodplain residents will receive flood insurance. Additionally, it ensures that federal disaster assistance will become available in the event of an emergency. Local government participants in the NFIP are also eligible to receive federal grants and loans. For example, the county's disaster management department has received such federal grants and loans in order to buy out flood-damaged properties and to retrofit and elevate flood-damaged structures. Local governments are only required to meet the minimum FEMA federal regulations to participate in the NFIP. However, if local governments adopt more protective regulations, FEMA will lower flood insurance rates for county floodplain residents. So, how did the proposed floodplain ordinance mapping updates get started? The state of Oregon and Washington identified the Lower Columbia watershed as a priority for FEMA and requested mapping updates in specific areas, including the Sandy River Basin. As a result of the state's request, the Sandy River Basin floodplain was remapped using LiDAR and new preliminary flood rate insurance maps were prepared. And if you don't know what LiDAR is, Steve would be happy to give you all the technical details at some point in our presentation. So, FEMA's risk mapping assessment and planning program, Risk Map, is what you see up on the screen, and they were responsible for the mapping that was done in Sandy River Basin. Following the project initiation in 2012, FEMA, in conjunction with Clackamas County and other local government partners, conducted public outreach to address community and property owner concerns. Specifically, there were two public meetings, an opportunity for public appeal and comment, and a subsequent resilience workshop. This process was part of FEMA's Risk Mapping Assessment and Planning Program, which is a nationwide effort to provide high-quality flood maps and information, tools to better assess the risk from flooding, and planning and outreach support to communities to help them take action to reduce or mitigate flood risk. And this table is also available in the staff report if you want to reference the specific dates on there and see public outreach. Clackamas County has been participating in the NFIP since 1978. Continued participation in the NFIP ensures that over 6,000 property owners within the county's floodplain continue to receive discounted flood insurance rates. The consequences of suspension from the NFIP would include losing access to FEMA flood insurance, federal disaster assistance, and federal loans or grants. Specifically, since it is a federal requirement to purchase flood insurance for any federally-backed mortgage that finances a structure located in the floodplain, this would adversely impact county residents trying to buy or sell property. While there is a growing private flood insurance market, it is often very expensive and not offered in high-risk zones such as the floodway. FEMA staff have communicated that failure to adopt the updated floodplain maps for the Sandy River Basin and floodplain ordinance tax amendments will result in the county's suspension from the NFIP. Here's an example of one of the new flood rate insurance maps prepared by FEMA as part of the Risk Map LiDAR mapping program. Only the Sandy River, Salmon River, Zigzag River, and Tributaries would be modified in the proposed preliminary firms that would be effective in January of 2019. FEMA, in conjunction with the Department of Land Conservation and Development's floodplain coordinator, have reviewed the county's adopted floodplain ordinance and identified the following changes in the text of the floodplain ordinance itself as required for continued participation in the NFIP. These include definition modifications to incorporate the exact language of FEMA's NFIP regulations, removal of the fish enhancement project exemption from Section 703.07 of the Code, Development in the Floodway. This process would still be allowed as an internal planning procedure. However, since it's not in FEMA's regulations on a federal level, they're requesting it's deleted from the county's code. Updates to the construction requirements of manufactured dwellings, as requested by county building code staff and required by FEMA. Clarification that determination of an exempt use requires review as a Type 1 land use application. Updates to standards for wet flooding, certain non-residential structures. And then FEMA is strongly suggesting the following text amendment, however, it's not mandatory. And that would be the addition of regulations requiring specific standards for siting and design of critical facilities, which includes schools, nursing homes, hospitals, police, fire, and emergency response installations. The county's Office of Disaster Management has also indicated they support adoption of this policy into the floodplain ordinance. So, what does this all mean for a floodplain property? The floodplain will be removed or reduced on some properties and added or enlarged on other properties only in the Sandy River Basin, and staff is happy to help property owners in the county figure out what the changes would be site-specific for your property. If you want to give us a call, we've already been helping people who call in with comments and questions, so we're happy to look at each property and address any concerns on that level. If a property that was previously out of the floodplain is being added into the floodplain, FEMA will provide lower insurance rates for two years to buffer the economic impact to the property owner. That's what FEMA Region 10 staff have communicated to Clackamas County planning staff. If the county adopts the new firms, the flood rate insurance maps, and ZDO 703 tax amendments, the county will remain in the NFIP and federally-backed flood insurance coverage will continue to be available for existing development and new construction. So, staff's findings and recommendation. We find that the proposed amendments, the tax amendments, and the new maps are necessary to continue the county's participation in the NFIP and comply with all applicable state, regional, and local criteria. So, we would be recommending of those two mapping and tax amendments to ZDO... I'm sorry. The floodplain ordinance, Section 703. And that concludes staff's presentation, unless Steve has technical additions to make.
That sounds great. You did... I've got nothing to add yet at this moment, but...
And I actually should have mentioned, because I don't know that all of you have met Steve either. So, Steve Henchka has been our internal floodplain expert for a very long time. He's a certified floodplain manager and knows a ton about all of this stuff. So, if you do have technical questions, he is on hand.
Thank you, Jennifer.
At this point, we will open the floor for clarifying questions from commissioners. I'm assuming we have a few. Does anyone want to jump in? Mary?
I have one, just on the critical facilities addition that says you added the definition for critical facilities. Is that also per FEMA, or is that something that staff had to create?
That's per FEMA. It's... Comes from their Code of Federal Regulations where it's, I think, a newer adoption on their federal level as well.
Other questions?
On those... Excuse me. On those critical facilities, the siting thereof, what, if any, were the substantial changes that were made that you wish us to adopt?
So, the code previously didn't specifically address critical facilities in terms of singling them out for siting and design criteria, so now we would be including a definition of what a critical facility is and then standards for where they're sited and designed to ensure public health and safety in the floodplain.
So, that's an optional... Doesn't have to be included in this, but the staff is recommending that we do include them in this? Okay.
Based on FEMA's strong recommendation and the county's Office of Disaster Management's recommendation for public safety.
I think the concern is that these are the types of facilities that we really want to have available when flooding occurs, and if they're actually locating in the floodplain, that can be sort of... It's a little bit counterintuitive. So, the idea would be if it's possible not to locate them there, that's preferable.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't mean it's impossible. It just raises the bar a little.
Thank you.
Other questions in the commission? Steve?
I'd like to understand, like, 703.07 more. Is that the critical lands, or was that the one that FEMA was saying they would like us to remove?
Hang on. Let me turn to that section.
I think it might have been slide seven.
Yeah, I can go back to it, too.
Oh, are you talking about the fish enhancement project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right there is. So, number three.
Okay. So, a while ago, FEMA... So, FEMA is divided up into a series of districts, basically, nationwide. So, FEMA Region 10 manages all of Pacific Northwest, and as more and more restoration projects went on-hand and were being done and stuff like that, they developed basically a policy for fish enhancement projects that relaxed the standards for development in the floodway a bit. And so, we have actually been using those, actually, quite often. Murph's seen a number of those projects that have gone in under those terms. And so... But what apparently national FEMA headquarters has told FEMA Region 10 that because it's not in Section 44 of the Code of Federal Regulations officially at the national headquarters level, it needs to be removed from our ordinance. However, FEMA Region 10 has instructed us that we can still process applications under those standards, so...
So, this would impact, like, if the river was larger and had salmon going through it and somebody wanted to do a structure that created shadows on the water, there still would be a different permitting process to make sure there's no impact?
Yeah, we... So, right now, we have a... Yeah, right now, if you put something in the floodway now, it's a pretty complicated process. It requires what's something called a no-rise analysis. So, these standards are relaxed, and we've seen a number of them already. The Sandy River Basin watershed council has done a lot of restoration projects. There's one coming online somewhere sometime next year, depending on the timeline, at the confluence of the Sandy and the Salmon. There was another one upstream of Timberline Rim on Columbia Land Trust property, kind of a large fish enhancement restoration project. And a lot of these projects also act as flood mitigation. They kind of fly in as, like, habitat restoration, stuff like that. So, you know, as far as, I guess, we understand, this is not going to change on our end. I mean, as silly as that sounds, we're just going to keep doing it. Instead of going through a full-blown floodplain development permit and doing expensive hydraulic modeling, it instead gets reviewed under a Type 1 process, which is much more streamlined. And if the truth be told, most of the time, the consultants on board with these projects are sophisticated enough that they virtually do hydraulic modeling anyway because they want the projects to sustain floods. You know, they generally want these things well-designed, and they have to be... They have to be supported by, you know, a reputable agency, like a state or federal agency is basically sponsoring the project as a fish enhancement, so... But we have to take the language out.
Yeah. It's just kind of odd because it sounds like essentially there's an agreement between Region 10 and the federal level that they can do these, but it can't be officially part of our floodplain ordinance. So, it was an odd response, but we're doing what we were instructed.
Yeah.
Could I expand on that question?
Yeah.
From the Sandy River Watershed Council, since we do have a $2 million project starting this year and probably Phase 1 and probably Phase 2 next year, is this going to put extra permit processing?
Is that the Sandy Salmon Confluence project?
This is the confluence project.
The project you're talking about?
Yeah.
As far as we know at this point, we will move forward and process that one exactly like we processed the Columbia Land Trust project and exactly like we've processed the... All the ones along the Salmon on BLM property that we've had. We've had a number of... The Sandy River Basin Watershed Council, I mean, I think we've probably processed six or seven of those on BLM property over there. So, as far as we know right now, we're just moving ahead. There should be zero change to it, so...
Sigh of relief.
Yeah.
Yes, because we do have in-river obstruction.
Yeah.
They'll be moving some of the 47,000 cubic meters of levee removal. They're going to use that for sandbars across the river, so...
Yep, and isn't Bear Consultants... Is Bear doing that one?
Yes, Bear's doing that one.
Brian Bear, yeah. So, you'll have... He'll... He has that... Anyway, not to get into the weeds here, but he works with that guy whose name I'm not going to remember, who does all the analysis for you, so he's in good shape.
Yep. Okay. Excellent.
I do have one more. It's... It might be a little unique, but the NFIP, I guess, I'm always having a concern when I see on the news there's disasters and then insurance companies go out of business. So, I would say there's always a concern that I want to say we do represent the community and, you know, having whatever we can do, mechanisms and why is to encourage multiple insurances in the same area so that it's not one insurance company, when a disaster happens, that they go out of business and homeowners is ones that are harmed. I don't know if we have any mechanism to speak with FEMA and the NFIP as far as the insurance providers.
We wouldn't, not from the land use perspective. I mean, I think my understanding is NFIP... And you can weigh in on this, but federal flood insurance is offered through multiple brokers, but the bottom line is it's the same program, no matter who's offering it. I think that's correct. Is that your understanding?
So, there's no... There's no li... I mean, the payout, in terms of, like you say, the liability or whatever, the danger...
Scale of the damage.
The payouts all come from FEMA. You know, we continue this program to ensure that the insurance is basically handled by FEMA. Now, I can't guarantee that the federal government, FEMA, aren't going to go out of business at some point, but local insurance companies are not affected by the National Flood Insurance Program. All they do is they write the policies.
They do the policy, okay.
And they have a lot of other background work to do, but that's it. They just write the policies, yeah.
There is a constant risk that the federal government will stop funding the NFIP. It was set to expire November 30th. They gave it a one-week extension. I haven't actually heard. I'm assuming there was an additional extension, but it was through December 7th was the last thing I heard. So, it is kind of part of the sort of issues at the federal level with spending bills, et cetera. So, there is some risk at some point, I guess, that the federal government might decide to get out of business in providing flood insurance, but so far, yeah.
I'll ask a question in a couple of weeks. No?
Yeah, exactly. We'll let you know.
I do have one more comment, and this is one I probably should have held back on till a little later, but I'm pretty upset with the way these maps have come out, and they're not recognizing the erosion zones, that there's been extensive mapping done on the upper Sandy River area. This was something that happened right after the 2011 flood, when we... Our neighborhood was wondering, Timberline Rim, what can we possibly do to protect ourselves? We thought that we'd have a federal agency move in and put a jetty in front of us and protect us. No, we found out that this was up to each homeowner to protect their property. So, what we had to do, we were scratching our heads, wondering what to do. We had an analysis done of all the reaches by the best company we could possibly find natural systems design that did extensive channel migration zone mapping. This does not address this. Right now, Steve and I are in a workshop trying... Working toward producing policy to deal with this particular issue. I don't know how far it's going to be down the line, but we're making progress. We have all the regulatory agencies sitting at the table, along with the governor's office, possibly state rep here, we hope, to help form policy to bring extra protection to the river and needed help when we have floods that don't reach federal flood emergency. There needs to be something to help the working class, so to speak, when we lose infrastructure, that we don't put that on top of our neighborhood, so to speak. We've gone through the hoops to identify these hazards, and it's called the Channel Migration Zones. There's a whole map system. I have the study that was partnered with Clackamas County, Oregon, OWEB, so to speak, and Timberline Rim was a partner on that. Department of Fish and Wildlife was a partner on that. We put this project together. We're still waiting for the county to be able to adopt this, but they need state policy behind them to have footage in it. So, that's where we are right now. We have to adopt these maps if we want flood insurance, so I'm voting to adopt them, but I'm not happy.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to wait for that for later as well because I was reading some of these comments, and there was also a comment where the county chose to just adopt FEMA maps. So, I'm presuming that the county can, in light of what we're probably here later, maybe pursue more comprehensive maps that kind of address the concerns of the folks affected going forward without affecting the flood insurance. Is that a true statement?
Pursue the channel migration zone mapping without affecting flood insurance rates? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we are moving forward with the channel migration zone. As Murph said, the work... Basically, our disaster management department has put together this program with Oregon Solutions, and we have started in on the program. And I guess, you know, we would kind of like it to come down from the state so that we have statewide policies and we have kind of statewide the state is... And in theory, a channel migration zone operate... Well, not in theory, but it operates entirely independently of flood insurance. I mean, the reality is, is that FEMA maps only so-called overbank flooding, so they don't... As far as the National Flood Insurance Program goes, they don't map channel migration.
In other words, the county is waiting to kind of see how this plays out with the state level before they would pursue what would be necessary to better protect those areas.
To... Yeah, well, we're... I guess we're not really... To, yeah, well, we're, I guess we're not really waiting, we're, we have a project underway in, in terms of how to develop Channel Migration Zone maps for Clackamas County. And, you know, like Washington by state law has to adopt Channel Migration Zone maps. I mean, it's a, it makes a lot of sense. There are other states that have adopted Channel Migration Zone maps. So, so we, we are, really, it's to the credit of our disaster management folks who have gotten that program off the ground, so.
The program's called Silver Jacket, if I remember right.
Right, yeah. Right, Oregon Solutions right there.
Yeah, Oregon Solutions, the mediation out of Portland State University.
So, just to clarify, is this something that's in the works and just isn't ready for prime time? Was there a deliberate decision not to include them in these maps? Like, what, what exactly is the issue?
Well, so really, they're two very separate things. That's, I guess, is to say, I mean, honestly, this is just FEMA came along, they, they created new National Flood Insurance Program maps for flood insurance.
Right.
It's a flood insurance program. We make an agreement with them, we adopt their standards, they give us flood insurance. They don't ma, they don't map channel migration, they just map overbank flooding. We are, at this point, we have to adopt these to keep the flood insurance available countywide. Doesn't mean we're not at all really on a separate tack, track, moving toward how we might develop and regulate or whatever the words were be the Channel Migration Zone standard, so.
And is there a?
I guess I would just simply call it like a separate project, and it's not finished yet at all.
That was my question. So it's, it's another project that's in the works? Do you have a particular timeline in mind on that?
Well, all I know at this point, to be honest with you, is our next meeting is in February, I think.
March.
So, March, okay. See, I know even less. But honestly, I don't have a completion timeline yet.
Great. And is that something that would come back before us, or is that something that's in a completely separate?
So we would, potentially it would come back to you, under completely separate. It wouldn't be, have anything to do with flood insurance or new floodplain maps. But if it involved ordinance updates and new adoption of new maps and things like that, then absolutely it would come back to you. Yeah, yeah, so.
The board has expressed some, a lot of interest in the Channel Migration Zones, but it hasn't gotten to the point where they've put it on our work program. And it sounds like it's a little premature at this point. I would not anticipate that it will be simple. I mean, the, I think it's like everything else, you, there's good public interest reasons to do it, but the flip side is potentially rendering certain properties not buildable or making them buildable only under, you know, greater standards. So of course, there would be this same type of public notice, there are issues in terms of, you know, what does that do in terms of property rights and all of that. And at this point, I think we don't know, because I don't know exactly what those regulations would look like. Is it like building in a floodplain where you just build the different standards? Or are you talking about having certain areas where there would be no building? So you can imagine there are a number of issues associated with that, and I think we just, we don't know enough yet to know exactly which direction.
Well, I do know it's, you know, it's a concern to a lot of folks up in the mountain, right? And so I, you know, if anything, it, we might consider encouraging the county commissioner to, commissioners to get this on the work plan, work plan, so it's something that we could revisit down the road. That's helpful context, so. Other questions from the planning commission? Ready to move forward?
May I have one more quickly? I actually can go all night at doing this, but could we possibly explain the difference between a type-one permit and a type-two?
Sure.
So, yeah, well, so type-one basically involves, the way I think of it, it involves so, no public notice, it's much less expensive, it's just a staff decision, it just goes straight, they submit the application, we process, and we send it right back to the applicant. There's no, there's none of this open period of, for comment, there's not a notice area with, so then when you get into a type-two, that is, has a public notice period, then it has a timeline within which we need to issue the decision, and then following that, there's an appeal period. Following that, the application can be appealed, of course, within the appeal period, in which case it can go to the Clackamas County hearings. So it's a much different and much longer process, the type-two versus the type-one. So that's it in kind of a nutshell. Those are, they're very precisely spelled out by Jennifer in our zoning department, and they have timelines that I never remember and other legislative requirements that I also never remember, but, but I guess suffice, sorry.
No, go ahead.
To get back to the type-one on the, I assume you're talking about the fish enhancement project. It, it really does streamline those projects. They were, they were infinitely more cumbersome before that came on board, so.
And the key with the type-one is that the standards have to be clear and objective. So you've got to be able to essentially look at it and know, it's this setback, it's, you know, this, this building height, it's, you can operate this many days a year, as opposed to standards that say things like, it has to be compatible with the neighborhood. And those, those types of discretionary decisions by, by land use law have to be at least a type-two.
Okay, I think we're ready to move forward. I'm sure we'll have more questions down the road. Melissa, can you tell me, we have a couple of exhibits here, is there any other correspondence that has been received that we don't have or wasn't included in the packet?
So Steve has actually looked at the exhibits, I haven't had time to, but I, it's my understanding that there are two letters, comment letters we received.
Correct.
Today or over the weekend?
We received two comments exactly. You should, you guys, you folks should all have copies of both of those. I honestly, again, I just saw them only today, and I haven't myself really had a very good chance to look at them in detail yet.
Excellent, perfect.
Thank you.
And there's no other exhibits that I know of, or letter, comment letters?
All right, we got one more of those. Are there any other government agencies here who would like to provide technical information? I'm assuming no. Okay, so with that, I think we can move on to the public testimony, the moment you've all been waiting for. I have a few folks, a few, I have four cards up here. If anyone else would like to testify, be sure to fill out a form and get those to Darcy. We'll go ahead and call folks up one at a time, since there's just a few of you. We'll start with Ted Labey. Come on up.
You want to mention the time limits?
Yeah, I think generally we, you keep, keep time limits to about three minutes, but there's some give and take. There's not too many people here, so just, we appreciate you being brief, if you would.
Okay, yes, I'll be less than three minutes. Thank you. My name is Ted Labey, and I'm the Policy and Program Director for the Urban Green Spaces Institute, which is a nonprofit that works across the Portland-Vancouver region to, works to integrate green spaces with the built environment. We work with agencies, nonprofits, and the general public on collaborative conservation initiatives. I'm here today to support the adoption of these updates to the floodplain management district. I have prepared some comments, I didn't submit them earlier, but I'll, I'll give them to Steve when I'm done here. I'm not going to go through everything, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. In general, we support the language that is being proposed. We would like to see the update go a little bit farther in several regards. One is, I, I'd like to see more explicit mitigation standards for bank armoring and floodplain fill. The ordinance talks about a balancing mechanism where there's like a one-for-one remove, removal. We'd like to see, you know, like two-to-one ratios where if there's new, new fill or new bank armoring, that there's, you know, at least twice as much removed. We're, we're looking at, you know, this, we're looking at climate change, we're looking at more frequent, more severe flood events, so it makes sense that we're, you know, kind of like pulling back from floodplains, not just replacing things as we move forward in time. In terms of the purpose statement, I, I'd love to see a really explicit recognition that floodplanes represent essential freshwater habitat for salmon, steelhead, as well as a host of other wildlife, and acknowledgement that there are real, you know, really significant ecosystem services that floodplanes provide, not just wild nature, but people too. And that I don't think is in the proposed update, and I think it'd be very easy to add, add something like that. The last thing I would just add, and again, my comments go into more detail, is that I, I'd like to see, it suggests that you consider new standards to limit impervious surfaces in floodplains, to acknowledge that, you know, floodplains are places where floodwaters actively recharge groundwaterers, which then sustain summer-based flows, and if we pave everything over in our floodplains, we're going to lose that. And there's nothing in there currently, and I believe that's something that FEMA had talked about recommending. Fish passage, I think we could do more in there around explicitly recognizing the ODFW. We talk, the, the proposed update acknowledges Oregon Department of Environmental Qualities' onsite septic standards. I think we can explicitly call out ODFW's fish passage technical standards, which exist, and that, that could be tightened up a little bit. That's pretty much it. I will just say that thank you for considering this and moving this through quickly. I think it's important, this update, I think there could be small improvements, but overall, we, we support what you're doing. Thank you.
Ted, are there any questions for commissioners from commissioners?
Okay, yep, thanks much.
I just have one question on the impervious surface, whereas I get it, we used to met the port as a way, when I worked for the port, but I'm curious as to how well they perform in an environment where it's subject to freezing. And is it, I mean, it works great when, when, when the water flows through, but when, if you have constant freezing, you know, since some of the higher areas that we're referring to frequently get snow, cold weather, would freeze, I'm just wondering if the pervious surfaces last as long when they're subject to that kind of conditions opposed to pervious surfaces in, in the valley where we don't get a lot of freezing.
Oh, you mean, not sure I understand. I guess, I guess what I was sort of, what I was suggesting is, is limiting, trying to, trying to put limits on how much impervious surface could be put into floodplains for new development. Is that?
Yeah, I get that, I understand that, but I guess I'm, the engineer sites coming out of me, sorry. But I'm thinking, you know, one of the things that happens with pavements is thawing and freezing cracks them, and eventually they break down faster. And so that's a, that's a downside for a pervious surface, because it's more, you know, you're going to have more freezing and, and thawing, so it just, even though fundamentally it makes sense, it seems like it also puts, then puts a burden on, on a road that's not going to last as long, because it's not going to hold up as well to the conditions. So there, there needs to be some, some consideration for where you're going to build these roads besides just, for that reason.
Comment on that?
Yeah.
Right now, I don't know if you're aware of this, Ted, but Sandy River Watershed Council has a project going on at Mount Hood Community College. Mount Hood Community College has been found to be the first community college in the country to be salmon-friendly, and they're converting all their parking lots into impervious, or pervious asphalt along with vegetated wiers to bring down the temp of Beaver Creek, which is responsible for about 5% of the salmon production in the lower Sandy. So there's an all-out effort right now to do exactly what you're asking for. That's not in Clackamas County, that's all, actually Multnomah County, but you have people from Clackamas County that are involved in it.
Yeah, I'm not saying they're a bad thing, they're a great thing. I love, I love riding my bike on a pervious surface when it was raining, because you had no road spray. But I'm just concerned when you get out in higher elevations, there's other considerations with pervious surfaces where they may not work as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any comment on that. I will say that wearing a different hat, I am a board member and organizer with DPave, which is a partner on that project.
I work with you.
So, yeah, trying to make more of that stuff happen. I think that, that if you, I don't know much about pervious pavement, but there are technologies that work quite well in freezing environments that have been developed and used all over across the country, so, but I don't know that much about it, so, yeah, thanks.
Other questions for Ted? Not seeing any? Excellent, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we're going to bring up Dennis Tilka, followed by Neil Schulman. So Neil, you're welcome to come up if you would like, or you can hang out. Thank you.
Dennis, welcome. Hi, is, I'm not sure I can do this in three minutes, so I'm going to skip around. I submitted you some testimony, and I think you've got it. I don't know if you have a chance to look at it or not.
I think we've all been able to skim through it, but we appreciate the summary.
So I'll just kind of skim through as much as I can. And first of all, too, is I'd like to thank you guys for volunteering your time, and I promise I won't waste your time, because I know you guys don't get paid, so. But I had a couple of questions right off the bat. She said these, there are minimum standards, FEMA minimum standards, is 275 the minimum standards?
It's CFR, so the Code of Federal Regulations, Chapter 44, that's FEMA's minimum standards.
So is 275 just meets those minimum standards? It doesn't exceed the minimum standards?
You're, you're referencing ZDO amendment, that's the amendment number.
Yes, but does 275 exceed the minimum standards? It does exceed.
Our, our existing floodplain ordinance currently, as it is right now, as it's effective, exceeds FEMA's minimum standards. That's why we have a higher ranking with them, the community ranking system.
Another question was, can you ask for an extension for the federal flood insurance from the 11819 deadline?
Apparently no.
Huh. Okay, is, well, I've been a goal-five advocate since the 70s, and I'll skip to my, just to my concerns, just to make it as brief as I can for you guys. But the new floodplain maps with the GIS overlays do not accurately delineate the flood hazard areas, and if you look at my exhibit, I think it's this colored one, right? What was that? No, it's Exhibit 2. Those areas that, it has like a toe sticking out of it, those are tax lots down around in my area. And what I did is, I went out and looked at the property corners, and it looks like they were, the flood insurance people were using the property lines instead of the flood lines, because I walked these areas and I found that all these lots were anywhere from 40 to 30 feet, actually within the floodway, or the floodplain now, I guess it would be called. So they didn't accurately reflect that. And I talked to the guys at Oregon Geology Department about it, who were doing the, he was the flood coordinator, and he says when you overlay the GIS maps, they're not accurate, and there could be variances. And what I was proposing is to have some kind of language in the ordinance that states that they, if it touches the floodzone area, you actually have to provide, be it mandatory, a flood elevation for those corners to touch, because otherwise it's problematic, because like if you look, if another county person just looked at it, they'd say, oh, all these areas are outside the floodplain, but they're not, because I actually looked. And there are several pictures in here, but I'll get to them next. Okay, so I'll go to, oh, the zoning ordinance does say that they can require it, but I think it should be mandatory. The second one is the side channel that I was mentioning, that flows, it'd be in that pink area of this Exhibit 2. I submitted photographs where that flood channel actually has current in it. About twice a year, the river flows, and there's a mouth there where the water flows through that side channel, and I submitted photos showing those water, and I, actually, one of the photos has like a property corner tag in it. You can see Exhibit 3 is the mouth of the channel, where you can see the water running in from the river. And Exhibit 4 is a little bit behind the mouth of the channel, you can see how much water's in there. And Exhibit 6 is a log, oh, you can't really see the tag, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so when I brought this up, the mapping had already been done. And I don't know, you know, I don't, not the technical, I don't have the technical expertise to say that they were wrong, so I guess we have to go with it. But if you look at Exhibits 11 and 12, this house was built using, it's called the Loma, Letter of Map Amendment, but it's in the same side channel as this water. And you can see how there's hardly any room for movement of water, or if they had to set the house, I mean, if the house had to be moved back. back, or erosion, or a log jam, or whatever, but you can see how close it is to that. And I'm not saying we have to do something about this house, I'm just showing the examples of what happened there. Okay, concern number three, I think, has been resolved. Then concern four, the Salmon River, Zigzag River, Sandy River, they're all significant Gold Five resources, and a quarter mile from the river is also inventoried as a Gold Five resource. And also, the salmon, the sandy, and the zigzag are federally designated Wild and Scenic Rivers, and the outstanding remarkable values include scenery, recreation, fishery, wildlife, hydrology, botany. And also, the Salmon River is, I mean, the Salmon River is part of the Sandy River, which together has been determined by the National Marine Fisheries Service as critical habitat for the restoration of the Lower Columbia Salmon and Steelhead Endangered Species Act, and this was in June 2003. The proposed Sandy, Salmon River floodway and flood hazard area zone is not sufficiently wide enough to allow the Salmon River to naturally migrate and wander as natural rivers do. The proposed floodway is too narrow to compensate for increased flood elevation due to obstructions such as log jams and bank erosions. This would violate ZDO 303.01 of the new ordinance, because it says, finding of fact subsection, it says, floods are caused by the cumulative effect of obstructions in special flood hazard areas that increase flood heights and velocities, and when inadequately anchored damaged land use in those areas. It goes on. At present, before this zoning ordinance is gonna be adopted, in this area, the floodway is 650 foot wide. The river had plenty of room to move to the west without regards to loss of life or property damage, as the area has been managed as a floodway with little or no development. The new floodway will reduce this significantly to about 100 feet, allowing much of the old floodway to be developed. Clackamas County has 100-foot setback requirement for the Salmon River, but there's an exemption in ZDO 704.05 because the lots are too small. When new houses are built in this area, the Salmon River would no longer be allowed to migrate and move, establish log jams or gather woody debris beneficial for fish habitat, and would, that would endanger life and property. Instead, tox stollers would be used to manage the river as a gutter adversely impacting the Salmon River and critical salmon and steel habitat. As noted before, after 1964, the Army Corps of Engineers channelized the Salmon River into a narrow channel, isolating many of these old flood channels that I described in my beginning part of this, subdivisions. The U.S. Soil Service identifies the soil as very cobby, cobble, and extremely unstable. When I evacuated my house three different times, I've lived there 44 years, but I've evacuated my house three different times, and each time I moved or left my house, it was because logs were coming down the river, scraping both sides of the river, and my bank was eroding. So the fire department told me to get out of there, because they weren't sure if it was gonna take the bridge, or if the trees were gonna fall on my house, or whatever. So I know it's impossible to plan for every flood event, but riverbank erosion and weak soil and log jams are known hazards that have occurred in the past and will occur in the future. There's a large amount of data that has been collected documenting that rivers do not stay within their banks, and the comments should apply to the entire flood study area of the Salmon and Salmon River, because the floodway history of these rivers, you can see Exhibit 11 and 12, there's, I think these were, oh, wait a second, I'm skipping too much, never mind about that. The fifth concern, the revision of flood maps will have a significantly adverse impact on the Salmon River because the revisions changed land use patterns in the riparian areas of the Salmon River. Before the revisions, this subdivision was historically mapped by FEMA as Salmon River floodway that was 650 foot wide, and it prohibited development. The designation of floodway would maintain a very large natural riparian habitat free of development. Now it's gonna be changed. This Salmon River, I don't wanna repeat myself, but the Salmon River, and all the rivers are designated, the Wild and Scenic Rivers, as well as the county inventories Gold Five. And before these revisions, it was easy to manage the river for the, it's called ORVs, outstanding remarkable values, which is the fish habitat and the hydrology. But these areas are significant Gold Five resources, and the habitat for these salmon fish, because there would be, the habitat for the endangered salmon, because there was over 100, 650 feet that prohibited development, and another 900 foot, feet of floodplain restricting development, the river was free to migrate and braid and flood with little concern for loss of life. These new provisions removing the floodway will now delineate these properties, I don't wanna, I'll skip that too. Even though I'm referring to the removal of floodways in my subdivision, there needs to be analysis of how many acres were removed in total from the floodway next to the Salmon and Sandy River as a result of this new flood study, and how it will affect land use patterns. After that analysis, FEMA should be required to consult with the U.S. Forest Service, BLM, National Marines Fisheries, State of Oregon, Clackamas County, to evaluate the cumulative effect of the action of adverse significant impacts to the Salmon River. In conclusion, I stated that the Army Corps dredged the Sandy and Salmon River after the 64 flood. What is the county gonna do when these rivers accumulate more rocks and soil on the bottom of these rivers, rise in the elevation of the floodway? Once this ordinance is adopted, these flood elevations are set in stone without any regards from Mother Nature. It would be prudent to have a buffer area where the floodways, where the floodways could be expanded if needed. The adoption of the ZDO 275 is considered a comprehensive plan where the statewide planning goals apply, especially Gold Five for all these reasons described. I read in your staff report about the Gold Five, and I strongly disagree with that, there is gonna be significant impact to the river if it's managed only as a gutter, where it wasn't allowed to move. But if you've got any questions, I hope I, you understood what I said, I just kinda went as fast as I could.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from the commission?
Well, I guess I'm, it raises an interesting point, when they set flood zones, that they just establish some arbitrary elevation without any consideration that that, that floods anyway. So I'm curious as to how do they go about doing this, or is it just strictly based on elevation only? Anyone know?
How do they go about floodplain mapping?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, they basically, they do, they check everything from stream gauges to whatever kind of records they have, they go out and they basically survey the river, they survey cross-sections, in this case, they also, I mean, it's, actually, so I couldn't tell you exactly, because I don't actually do that myself for a living, it's like a fluvio-geomorphologist, and what a resources engineer go out that. And it's a pretty formal standard set by FEMA of a wholesale hydrologic and hydraulic analysis of essentially how the stream performs in a flood, and how much, the volume of water that you have coming down there, the cubic feet per second, and so forth. And so, it's, you know, it's a pretty involved, and then they basically try to determine the elevations of the 100-year flood, or the 1% annual chance flood throughout the course of that study. And so, you know, the, the underlying, couldn't give you very specifics of the underlying methodology, I mean, it also includes bathymetry, in this case, they're folding LiDAR into it, so what the LiDAR does is it allows you to extract pretty precise elevations and stuff like that.
Is this for 100, so these maps are based on 100-year floods?
Well, I mean, the, yeah, I mean, the, the maps show the 500-year flood, the 100-year flood, they also show, they also provide us information with the 10-year flood and the 50-year flood, those aren't shown on the map. So the maps, and effectively the maps, their key point is to represent the so-called 1% annual chance flood, or the 100-year flood, because that's basically the regulatory flood. In other words, that's the one wherein flood insurance is required. So that's probably their primary goal.
And there's mapping methodology in the flood insurance study too, to some degree, of how they created the maps, you can read.
I mean, it's, but, it's called, right now, it's, to get in the weeds just a second, it's called the, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Hydraulic Engineering Center River Analysis System, it's sort of the ongoing hydraulic modeling software that's used, and, you know, you have to have certain credentials and whatever to be able to run that stuff, and that's ultimately how everything is modeled, after they gather all the data. And there's some 2D modeling that's coming down the pike, that apparently, and for reasons I couldn't exactly tell you, that is potentially more accurate, but it's, you know, it's a pretty complicated hydraulic, hydrologic mapping process.
So theoretically, then, this modeling would have taken into consideration what these, what were depicted on these photos?
Well, I mean, so, exactly, theoretically, it would have, and, you know, I'm, I have, Mr. Tilka, I'm aware, yeah, you had correspondence with FEMA, and we have, I can provide you guys with that if you want, but, you know, it very well may be, I mean, I, honestly, I'm not here...
No, I understand, I'm just trying to understand that.
No, and I'm not saying I'm not here, because I am here, I guess all I'm trying to say is, it's very feasible that, you know, if perhaps some flooding conditions, what nature, what Mother Nature decides to do, honestly, this is an insurance program.
Right.
Honestly, in the end, that's really what you're looking at, it's an insurance program with performance standards.
Right.
FEMA basically says to us.
But it also, but it also would drive where you can develop and where you can't develop, theoretically, and that's part of what insurance is looking for, is trying to make sure they don't develop an area where they're likely gonna have to pay out, where there's a, it's, so anyway, it's interesting that they, I mean, these pictures are fairly compelling, that there's a problem here, and that somehow it got missed.
You know, again, and, that would be up to the folks who actually did the hydraulic analysis and the mapping, and as I, Mr. Tilka did correspond with them, and you're looking right now at our end result, at least for the time being, and, sorry, go ahead.
I have a question. How often does FEMA update these maps?
I would say snarkily whenever they feel like it, that's not the answer. There is, it, it seems to vary a lot, and there may be something in the 44 CFR that says, I think they have a goal of, an aspiration of like every 10 years or something like that, but it doesn't really happen like that. The last, honestly, the actual hydraulic mapping for, although we got new maps in 2008, and there were some adjustments to elevations, the actual hydraulic modeling for the Sandy River Basin goes back to the 70s, and the floodplain mapping goes, originated from the 19, the late 1970s. So as far as like how regularly they do it, I honestly couldn't answer that for you.
So Dennis, what is it you want us to do? We can't change the maps.
I don't want you to change the maps exactly, what I'd like to see you do is ask for extension and go for this, what you guys were talking about, the stream migration, because the way I understand flooding, I've been involved with this for quite some time, is they take the carrying capacity of the river and where the tops are, and they're assuming the river bottom is gonna stay here, like it's all concrete, and it's not gonna happen that way, the river's gonna change. So if the river changes, the tops are gonna change, as simple as that. It's just like if you have a full glass of water and you stick something into it, it's gonna overflow, so it's gonna change where the water's gonna go.
Okay, given that we can't change the maps, we're looking at two things here. One is adopting the maps so we can get insurance for the community, and the second piece of it is to approve or recommend the county commissioners approve the new wording in the ordinance. So those are the two things that we are gonna be discussing tonight. So you wanna have something changed in the ordinance?
Is, one of the things I'd like to see changed right off the bat is to make it mandatory if the property adjoins the flood hazard zone, where it has to be, they have to supply elevation certificate for that. Another one is it has to be on native ground, where it can't, they can't use fill to do the elevation certificate. Ideally, I'd like to see you guys do a buffer area next to the floodway to allow for stream migration. I mean, because the river is up there, I mean, the land up there is basically sand, it's gonna move.
Dennis, have you seen the CNC?
No, I haven't.
They're considerably wider.
Yeah.
In my neighborhood, Division 5 is completely in the channel migration zone. It, I'm on Mountain Meadow Lane by the lodge, that is actually within the channel migration zone. If they're adopted, about 2/3 of Timberline Rim is within the channel migration zone. Now, what do we do that, once we've realized or identify this as a problem, as in a high hazard zone? Do we buy out, or this is something that the county has to look at?
Well, it's just like anything else, is information is the most important thing. People need to know, when they buy a piece of property, the likelihood of it flooding.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, as simple as that. Is, look how many people have lost their life savings because they didn't know that it was gonna flood.
Well, and that's something else that we're working on, that, with this channel migration policy, is being able to identify these areas and having it as public. Right now, if you go on Clackamas County's public site to see what the flood hazards are, it may say something as, some flood hazard might exist, and that's an understatement in many places. Out in my neighborhood, the Sandy River changed, in less than 24 hours, the bed elevation went up 12 feet, which caused the river to spread considerably with bank erosions.
Erosion, yes.
Yep, and that just added to it, and that was because of an avulsion upstream that carried land down in a, basically a debris flow, and it just landed right in front of our properties.
I understand. And the way I understand FEMA is, the whole idea of this flood insurance program is to reduce the amount of property that would get flooded, so they don't have to spend money repairing these properties. So, I mean, this leaves a lot of properties that will be flooded in the future. But I thank you for...
Thank you very much. No, it was a good conversation, you've given us a lot to think about. See, just for clarification, you indicated that we don't have an opportunity to ask for an extension if we want one.
We did check on that directly, so if there's, for what, there's no opportunity, if we don't meet the deadline, basically flood insurance will be suspended until such time as we meet the deadline, that's what'll happen.
Very helpful, thank you. All right, thank you for your patience, Neil, welcome, thank you.
I'm Neil Schulman, I'm the Executive Director of the North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council, and like Ted Labby before me, I would like to support the work that's been done, but urge the language of the ordinance to go significantly further in acknowledging measures that could both protect people and property, but also use natural systems that integrate the functioning of nature into flood protection as well. And we've had the conversation about the example of the project at the Mount Hood Community College, the other example where, that I think has been highly successful, has been on Johnson Creek, where allowing the creek to return to a natural floodplain has reduced the damage that perpetual flooding was inflicting on people and businesses. Flooding is the number one concern we hear about residents in our watersheds. The other thing that I would say is that I would, I would, we have some suggested language for not only the incorporation of things like wetlands and natural floodplains, but also for riparian zones, large trees, and the passive management of ecosystem services that basically, if we let, give, give the river part of, as much of its floodplain back as possible, will do a fair amount of flood prevention and mitigation for free for us. The, I would also second and put in even stronger terms the comment that Ted made about needing to mitigate, and preferably in the upstream direction, for any increased bank armoring, dikes, or levees, because what those do, they may get the flood off my property, but they're going to pass a more powerful flood on to the people downstream of me. And therefore, that should only be a measure of last resort, not only for its effect on the stream as a natural part of the landscape, but also on just the people living downstream or working downstream. The other thing I would say that I don't think I probably need to say to this group is that obviously a lot of the floodplain and flooding issues don't actually originate in the floodplain, they originate in the uplands and the amount of... They originate in the uplands and the amount of impervious surface. And that as we see increased flashiness in our systems, it's not only due to weather, it's due to increased pavement in the up, in the upland areas that flows down to the stream and went in much faster periods of time. And that is also what we're seeing a lot of in our neck of the woods along Reinerson Creek, Kellogg and Mount Scott Creek, River Forest Creek, and Boardman Creek. Um, so I think not only do we need to reduce overall flood, flood plain development, but we also need to look carefully at, at development codes and in the uplands and how to reduce their contribution to floods. I would also firmly agree that there is a lot of ecological value to flood plain protections. We have a lot of fish passage issues for salmon, steelhead, and lamprey in our watersheds. And I would highly encourage the consistency with the ODFW design standards for bridges, culverts, and transportation projects. I think that is, I would, uh, something I would like to see inserted. And again, millions of dollars have been spent in Clackamas County by government agencies, taxpayers, utility ratepayers, and nonprofit organizations removing barriers to fish passage. So we should be, take any opportunity we can to continue that, continue that work and protect that investment. Uh, we have some specific recommended language that I'll give to you from Joseph Edge, our chair, who's sick tonight. But I wanted to really say this is an opportunity both to pursue, not only to pursue compliance with the NFIP, but also to look at actually, look at measures that can really benefit the citizens in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Questions from the commission? This is the second time the ODFW design standards have come up. Have, has there been any discussion about how and whether to incorporate them into our standards?
Well, I mean, I think, so the sense I get from that is basically this, these are for infrastructure projects, which typically would be bridges, scour repair projects, that kind of thing. And so those are done by our, and I could be wrong, but I think that's what he's talking about. Those are basically handled by our transportation engineering folks. And they follow the slopes two methodology. I never remember what slopes two stands for. Um, there's, I know that our, we do a number of bridge repair projects, scour projects that actually fall under those type one processes so that they're, they include a lot of enhancement in the project. Um, and, you know, honestly, I, I wouldn't be able to directly speak on the extent to which ODFW coordinates. But as I say, my understanding is it's all sort of incorporated into the slopes two process. And, um, you know, I often consult with the manager of our scour projects, for example, who, who handles some of the other infrastructure. And many times, um, these things are able to move forward as fish enhancement projects. So repair, and then there's enhancement. So ODFW anytime, so anytime anything gets close to the bed and banks, we notify the Department of State Lands, who in turn coordinates with the US Army Corps of Engineers. And they also coordinate with ODFW so that we just make sure that any state regulations, once they potentially are required, we send it to them so they can let us know. And so that we're not out of compliance with. I, I believe ODFW is not a regulatory agency. They're a commenting agency, but the Department of State Lands works closely in conjunction with them, especially with the, with the endanger, I was going to say ESA, with the Endangered Species Act issues. So regarding salmon, salmon, so.
And National Marine Fisheries on top.
Well, right. Yeah, that, that's the, exactly. So NIMPs being the federal, under, it's through NIMPs that ESA comes nationally. So, exactly.
So, but what I did hear was there's probably an opportunity for consultation with ODFW, but there's nothing requiring us to administer their recommended design standards. It's still optional unless there's some state law requirement that steps in. Is that accurate?
Well, I guess the best way to look at it is that, like I say, right now, we're really just looking at flood insurance. It's a flood insurance program and there are performance standards. As a sidebar, FEMA has actually been sued to be out of compliance with the Endangered Species Act for having essentially not, by, with not consulting with the National Marine Fisheries Service. That's kind of a whole different issue. And it gets this whole additional concept that flood plains are indeed habitat. I mean, they really are habitat and they perform all, all these ecosystem functions and natural and beneficial properties of flood plains are absolutely true. And historically speaking, the national flood insurance, flood insurance program, you know, really hasn't looked at any of that. It's really just like I say, it's a means of designing structures and infrastructure in the flood plain that will survive a flood. That's really its point in a nutshell. And so many of these other regulations that have been being discussed here, you know, they kick in for us under sort of different or through different processes. Many of which, if not nearly all of which, come into play when you do flood plain development. You know, I mean, unless it's just like a, a very basic, single-family residence is being elevated. But, you know, otherwise, a lot of this stuff comes into play directly or indirectly throughout the, the development process. So.
Want to jump in? Uh, well, yeah, I was, I was going to ask that question about how it's affected by that lawsuit. But I guess fundamentally, part of their, part of the argument for that lawsuit was the fact that they allowed areas to be developed that shouldn't have been developed. And, and decreased flood plain areas and, and through the insurance program. If I understand, my understanding of what was behind that lawsuit. So, so wouldn't this also then, would we be essentially continuing FEMA's practice by adapting, adopting, uh, development in areas that really shouldn't be developed for other reasons besides what FEMA defines as a flood, flood plain? Or, or are you saying that that then, if that happens, all, those, those requirements kick in and that will then affect how that's developed? Is that what you're saying?
Well, so federal agencies, generally speaking, are required to consult with the National Marine Fisheries Service.
Right.
For whatever reason, FEMA felt that they did not have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So the lawsuit basically started because Orca's habitat in Washington were endangered by the, the, um, by basically salmon being unable to survive in the Puget Sound or being compromised in the Puget Sound. And so, as, as of course with everything, it's, it's legal and it's, so it started out as a lawsuit against FEMA in Washington. It's now made its way to Oregon. And so it's kind of held up in the courts right now. We don't exactly know when it's going to actually be required and/or implemented. But at that point, assuming that it goes forward, um, then we will start seeing additional standards for flood plain management that are going to be set by FEMA. Besides the ones, you know, the other sort of environmental overlays and, and river, you know, habitat, natural beneficial functions that we have in other ordinances. So that's, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
No, no, that's, that's helpful. I guess, I guess what I'm, it just seemed like there's, there's lots of tentacles here.
There are.
That play into this and how this all fits together is what I'm trying to get my arms around.
Yeah, we anticipated this actually to really kick in, you know, several years ago. But like I say, it's been the, the, this additional side to the national flood insurance program that would set envi, much, much more stringent environmental standards.
So if I could just chime in for a second, um, I think it's important to care. We've heard a couple of different people testify talking about sort of the environmental implications of the flood plain ordinance. And I think while certainly staff would not opine that flood plains are not environmentally significant, Steve's right that historically, we've managed our flood plain more from the perspective of sort of safe or sound or less risky development in flood plains and not from the environmental perspective. Section 703 is not constructed generally as an environmental, as a set of environmental regulations. You elevate, you put in, you know, openings in your foundation to allow the water to flow, you, those kinds of things. There are, we do have some requirements. We don't generally permit development in floodways for the most part. There's a balanced cut and fill requirement. I mean, there are some things that arguably maybe do some of what people are talking about, but generally that's not what it is. It may be eventually, again, if this lawsuit, depending on how this all sorts itself out, we may be back to you not just with channel migration zones, but with how do we respond to the Endangered Species Act in the context of flood plain?
Okay.
We have Goal Five, you heard testimony from Mr. Tilka about Goal Five. Um, we have Goal Five regulations that apply, that are not in 703, that talk about buffers from streams, that talk about mitigation for tree removal and, and all of that. And it's administered through entirely different sets of regulations in the code. And often they interact and people have to comply with both. But we are not prohibiting development in the flood plain. That is a fact. So.
But does that.
Right, wrong, or indifferent?
Does that mean that we can't add something to the 703.02 purpose, like suggested in writing by one of our comments, as well as suggested verbally here tonight? Something added in general about the, about mitigating the effect of floods through natural barriers, trees, what have you? Is there something we could add and it would be okay?
So I, it's, it's the, you could potentially add to the purpose statement. Um, we'll, whatever we do ends up going, is going to end up going back to the people we're corresponding with at the state and the federal government about compliance. They've had us add certain things to the purpose statement. If we choose to add something else, I think that's fine. Again, I just saw this today, but I guess I would have a question as to whether our regulations really do that. So that's sort of my question. We may want that to happen, but the purpose statement is only, the purpose statement doesn't apply to development applications. It, it's just a statement of a vision. It doesn't mean anything in terms of what you can or can't do. We don't have anything that says you can't take trees out in a flood plain. You can. So to say we have this purpose of, it may not be supported by the actual regulations. And that would be my concern. There should be a connection between the purpose statement and what the code actually does. So I would need to analyze these more to kind of find out if, there certainly could be something in there that, that speaks to that. Certainly in our river buffer standards, we do. And there we've got, you know, the purpose statement, we talk about that and we link.
So just to clarify, and I'll go to Christine. So what I heard you say was this, section 703 regulates development in the flood plain.
Correct.
There may be plenty of other regulations that deal with activities that happen in the flood plain. They just may not be here.
Correct.
And so then the question to some of the folks who have commented is whether or not these regulations in some way exist somewhere else in our ZDO. Because just because it's not here doesn't mean it doesn't exist at all.
Correct, yes. Habitat Conservation Area District, the River and Stream Conservation Area, the Water Quality Resource Area District. Yes, we have other provisions that get at those issues. Not that they can't be improved, but not really.
Right. It's not.
Within the scope of this project.
It's not within the scope of this section to manage some of that stuff.
Correct.
They will come up with in other sections of our work plans.
Yes, correct.
Uh, Christine, now, I know that, I, I have a sense that Neil would like to offer initial comments. We'll let you do that after Christine.
Sure.
I was just going to make the obvious statement that our channel right now is meandering based on, as a conversation, it's super interesting, but it's well beyond the scope of what was noticed for tonight's hearing. And certainly be outside the scope of what the text amendments are or the map adoption is required for people to have access to insurance. So that's all I was going to note.
Thank you. Neil, do you have any?
No, I was just going to say that I think that Steve is correct that there's not a ton of guidance from the lawsuit. There is a biological opinion on the, you know, from, on the, from NIMPs, I think, on the NFIP that I'm not particularly well-versed in. Uh, you get my point regardless of where it lives in the code. And I just want to thank you for that.
Right. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And, and thank you for your testimony and encourage you to continue watching this stuff for us. So, excellent. So we have one last person, Marlene Casley. Come on up, Marlene.
Marlene.
Marlene, sorry for pronouncing that incorrectly.
I'm Marlene Casley, and I'm just a homeowner up on the Salmon River. And I may have been able to get my questions answered if I would have called, but I had a hard time with the website, and so I just thought I'd come here.
Welcome.
Um, a few years ago, Clackamas County lost their community rating. So our flood insurance was raised 25%. Will these flood, adopting the flood maps and stuff, will that go towards reducing that amount again?
So, um, the, yeah, like you are absolutely correct. It seemed to become a little bit too overly labor-intensive to maintain it. There is now a movement afoot to reconstitute the CRS program so that you would hopefully then start enjoying those discounts again. So that's, that's underway. I don't have a specific timeline for that. There is some kind of a, a performance measure, I think, in Clackamas County's plan to basically reconstitute that program. Um, the, these maps themselves, um, these are really pretty, pretty, I don't know, run-of-the-mill. We, we're just adopting maps. So these themselves wouldn't. But, um, you know, I mean, when we got in the first time, we, the, the truth of matters, the county already sort of operates, you know, at a, maybe a, probably now to class six or class seven at most in the CRS, just by its very, just day-to-day, normal conventional practices. So, um, you know, so if we do try to get back in, we could probably get back in
Yeah.
with 15 to 20% discount. So that's, that's like I said, it's just kind of on the horizon. These maps themselves are really just, they are what they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there a plot map overlay for these flood, for these flood maps?
You mean like, is there an overlay for your property?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so we can basically create that for you.
Okay.
If you remind me to, or I'll remind myself, um, I mean, I can give you my card. You can send me an email. I can make you a plot map.
Okay, I think I've got your name on here.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Do you have my email? Anyway, I'll talk to you after.
Had there, it is listed here. Okay, then I'll do that.
Yeah, we can send you out a map.
You know, to, I remember we came to the county a few years back saying, okay, show us on the map, the flood maps, where our property is, and nobody could do that. So, yeah, it's.
Yeah, we have much more detailed information out down to the site-specific level through geographic information system, information.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any other folks who would like to testify here tonight? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to deliberations. Let me take a poll here. Do folks want to power through this? Do we want to take a five-minute break? Uh, we've been here for a while. Anyone need to, is that a yes, take a break or keep going?
Five-minute break.
Okay.
Oh, Murph, do you want to break?
Wants a break?
Murph wants a break.
Murph wants a break. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll get back here and, and finish this up. So, thank you very much.
Actually, some pretty good analysis of an interruption at Mount Hood.
Yeah. There we go. Okay, so, um, I think what we're going to do here is split this into a couple different pieces. So, um, we'll start by, so there are two recommendations in the staff report. One, the first one dealt with the mapping question. The second dealt with the text amendments. And then I'm kind of anticipating we'll move into a third section here around a discussion around the stream channelization project and whether we want to do anything related to that. Right? So does that make sense as a way of kind of moving this discussion forward? So why don't we go ahead and start with a mapping? I think that seems to be pretty straightforward, but why don't we, does anyone want to share their thoughts specifically on the, the adoption of the FEMA maps?
I think the FEMA map is the FEMA map.
I think we have to do it in order to have insurance.
Anyone disagree with that?
Nope.
Well, I disagree with it, but I, I have to go along with it.
Right, right, right. There are issues with the mapping, but we obviously need to adopt them, right?
Yeah, we, we acknowledge that the maps may not be correct.
Right.
But nonetheless, they are the maps we have to use, so.
Right.
If it's afford.
Anyone want to offer a motion to that extent?
I think a motion that we pass.
Murph, Murph moves to adopt the FEMA maps.
Second.
Second by Mike. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we got that first part taken care of. So let's have a discussion about the text amendments. Um, we've heard a lot of testimony, comments. Why don't we, would anyone like to offer their thoughts and then we'll move, move through? Murph?
703 dot zero six. Type one uses. Second line down, flood plain development, I think it's supposed to say, instead of gelvent.
Sorry, it's a typo.
Can you give me a page number?
Uh, seven.
703 six is what you said.
703, yeah, or yeah, dot zero six.
703, page three.
Oh, it's a G instead of a D, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Typo.
So that's a typo. Staff will take note of it. I don't think we need to make any changes.
Although I do believe that FEMA gave some specific language that you have to adopt typos and all, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's to the point, I kid you not, I have to adopt the commas. That I haven't, like, literally, but I think I'm okay with this.
Murph, did you have other comments?
Oh, of course I did.
Go for it. Go for it.
Um, on 703.08, line E, under 2, replacement, substantial improvement, or repair of substantial damage of a structure that was constructed prior to the establishment of or revisions to the floodplain, subject to the following. And I was curious if the confluence reconnection would fall under that.
I got lost in the citation. 703.08? Juries of the Planning Director?
No, just 703.07.
07, okay.
That would be number 2E.
2E.
Page 703-13.
Yes.
Isn't that 703.08?
No, it's just above it.
So, 703.07E, and then you said, which one under E?
Uh, E. Yep.
Replacement, substantial improvement?
Yeah, okay.
But there is no E under... Are you going by the old numbers?
Excuse me, that would just be E.
Top of page 13, right, Murph?
That's under 703.08, according to what it shows here with the 7...
7 checking out.
087?
If we're on the top of page 13, that would be 703.07E. Replacement, substantial improvement, or repair of substantial damage?
We're on page 8. Page 8. Yes.
Okay.
So, we are on page 703-8. Is that where we're at?
We're on...
I think we're all lost this part.
Yeah, we're lost.
Page citation, okay.
Number 8, page 8. I numbered mine, but, yeah, so this is under clause 703-07E.
We got a page number on the bottom.
Which is actually page 703-13.
So, can you look at the one they provided us?
Yeah, that's what it is. I worked off mine, I'm sorry. I'm just getting started here.
That's where I think it is, but I don't know.
For clarification, we are on page 703-13 of the paper that was given to us, and we're on Section E, correct, Murph? Which starts with replacement, substantial improvement?
Exactly.
Okay.
Can you restate your question?
Yes. Now, we can have a conversation.
What I was questioning is the project that we have coming up. Does that fall under this particular wording?
The confluence project?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Yep.
All of that, just for that, but, yeah.
Go on.
Now you have me all messed up. I had it all in order here for a minute.
You're the only one out of staff, Murph.
If you give us sections, I'll help you find this page number.
Can I ask one question I probably should have asked before?
Go ahead, Christine.
For the portion on siding of critical facilities, are there any critical facilities currently sited in these floodplains?
So, the only one that I can think of off the top of my head is Sanitarious, the Oak Lodge Sanitary District is in the floodplain. They did a big project quite a few years back. Luckily, we have... We already have a provision that toxic and hazardous materials have to be elevated. So, we got that far. And... But I'm not... Honestly, I'm not sure. I would... I wouldn't count on... I'd have to do an analogy. We may have already done it, but it's very possible we have others in the floodplain, so.
I wondered about schools, whether it's possible.
It's certainly possible, yeah.
And how are they affected by this addition to the ZDO?
You mean, existing?
Yeah, existing.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would be the existing, you know, we wouldn't have to get rid of them or anything like that. I mean, it's going to apply primarily to siding of new critical facilities.
It's prospective, yeah, as always. Okay, thank you.
So...
So, if it's a critical facility, is there any change in the insurance rate that the National Insurance Program would require?
No, not to the best of my knowledge. There would not be any change. It'd be...
For schools?
It's a different process, commercial, institutional, those, you know, public facilities, those kinds of things. I honestly don't know how the insurance rate works at all, but I think it's one and the same.
Okay.
Yep.
Murph, are you ready?
I am ready. Under 703-07...
Is this a page number or a code citation?
703-12. This is a code question? Page 12.
Thank you.
Steve seems to be able to follow him just fine.
Well, I've been trying to follow Murph for a long time.
I'm just trying to... Yeah, he has. I'm really confused.
A quarter of times.
So, what section are you on now?
I'm looking at B? Does it start with repairs?
Page 703-12. About halfway.
Repair, rebuild, rehab... Rehabilitation? I'm sorry. I made all my notes on what was emailed to me.
You're right. I get it, yeah.
Exactly, so, yeah.
That's okay. You work off of the citations, and we'll try and find the page number for you.
Okay. This was on development in the floodway, is how it's...
Is it RIPRAP?
Yeah, so you're at the bottom of 703-12. It's now 703.08, development in the floodway, the very bottom of the page.
Okay.
And then, on 703-13, I think you're referring to Section B that starts with RIPRAP?
Nope, this starts with the special flood hazard area. More detailed base flood elevation or floodway data is available outside of the adopted flood insurance study from the federal, state, or other authoritative source, such as preliminary or draft information from the new study that will revise the flood insurance study. The Planning Director may obtain review...
That's on 14.
Did you find it?
It's right here.
Okay.
It's 703-14, and it's 703-09. It looks like B.
Yeah. Within a special floodplain hazard area? Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
We're with you now.
Page 14, B. Okay, within the special flood hazard area, when more detailed base flood elevation or floodway data is available outside of the adopted flood insurance study from a federal, state, or other authoritative source, such as preliminary or draft information from a new study that will revise the flood insurance study, the Planning Director may obtain review and reasonably utilize such data as long as it is more restrictive than the current effective data. When the data pertains to preliminary or draft flood insurance study in Zone A, and the Planning Director is required to reasonably utilize that data and is allowed discretion in using this data only to the extent that the technical or scientific validity of this data in this draft or preliminary flood insurance study is questioned by the qualified professional. Does this include the NSD mapping of the channel migration zones?
No, that's... This just includes FEMA floodplain data.
And we can't add that until?
Well, we don't really have... I mean, we don't have any standards for it, exactly, for how we would... How we're going to regulate a channel migration zone.
Okay, so it would not ever be considered? If somebody wants to build in a historical channel that is identified in a channel migration zone, but not identified on the flood maps, that possibility still exists?
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah, it does. Yep.
I guess that has to change.
Yeah, I'm...
So, in Section B, the part that... The part that concerns me, I'll say it won't be bothered, I was going to... Concerns me is, you know, accepting draft or preliminary data that hasn't been certified or accepted. And the verbiage, verbiage is kind of saying, they will accept it. So, if you get bad data that's more restrictive, but it's actually bad data, then you're required to utilize it? Well, we do have the data. It just has not been adopted. Clackamas County has partnered with OWEB and neighborhoods to produce this mapping of the Upper Sandy River, but we have not adopted it yet. So, it identifies all these hazard areas, and this map, this is what I'm upset with, is that we waited for these flood maps, and they don't identify this study at all. But that's the vintage of that data. What happens if there's another study that has a vintage one day more current than your data, and it's different? How do you determine which one's the certified data?
Well, as I read this, it's the Planning Director's discretion to decide whether that data is valid or not.
Exactly.
Which... Which I'm a little confused, because that means, in theory, that if the Planning Director found these other maps to have valid information, that they could be used in implementing whatever proposal is for. So, I guess I disagree with Steve that...
Oh, sorry.
In theory, have the option to use that data.
Yes.
So, again, if we could... I guess the way I would have to best look at it is, if we can just think of the channel migration zone project as separate from this very narrowly focused goal of just adopting FEMA's overbank flooding standards only. And if you'd like, I can give you precisely what this standard means, since we basically, for the most part, just sort of adopt and regurgitate FEMA language. I can tell you what this means. I have a good example of it for the Sandy River. But unfortunately, it's not going to have any allowance for adopting a channel migration zone.
I mean, essentially, the channel migration zone is not a floodplain.
Yes.
That's the issue. They're totally different.
That's what I wanted to clarify. It seems like it's a... The semantics matter, it sounds like, at this moment, and they are specifically referencing... Where am I again? Where are we again? B?
Page 14, B.
There you go. And they're very specifically referencing language that sounds very specific to base flood elevation and floodway data. And it doesn't sound like channel migration is the same thing as floodway data.
So, let me just, real quick, we've had these maps, we've had draft data for these maps for the entire Sandy River Basin since 2011, which is however many years that is. So, literally, since the time of the first maps, we have considered that to be better data overall. So, anytime somebody has, say, just for example, built a home within the Sandy River Basin, and their elevation is getting worse, because we can't get them better, we can't go better, but we can go worse, for the most part, and folks have been very compliant, we've had them elevate to that new BFE. And so, we have been basically reasonably utilizing new data, which is all the data for this study that originated in 2011, when they flew the most recent LIDAR. Cedar Creek is the example here, where it basically says, as you go on in this paragraph, that you have to use this data, because Cedar Creek is something that's called an approximate A-zone, which means that it doesn't have a so-called detailed study. It's just sort of a blob, it's a best guess. And so, for Cedar Creek, and I just, in fact, ran into somebody who'd built there recently, and we elevated her, and she's so happy, she doesn't even pay flood insurance. But we were definitely regulating to the new BFEs for Cedar Creek, even though they've been draft data since 2011, because it require... This provision requires us. But again, unfortunately, it's... The channel migration zone is, as far as purposes of this and straight-up floodplain mapping, it's just not a component of it. It's a hazard. It's a natural hazard.
A natural hazard.
It's like landslide hazards, it's like soil hazards, those kinds of things can be a separate hazard that we, as I'm sure Murph would say, need to implement, so.
Can you define special flood hazard area?
Yeah, special flood hazard area is really FEMA's term that they use a lot, that basically means the floodplain. And it basically means a 100-year floodplain is the special flood hazard area. It's synonymous with floodplain.
Other questions, comments?
I know I had seen erosion mentioned once in our new verbiage, but I don't, yeah.
Did you write?
Erosion is talked about in the new definition of flood that FEMA is having us adopt on page 5. I don't know if that's the reference you're talking about, but...
That's probably it.
The collapse or subsidence of land along the shore of a lake or other body of water as a result of erosion. So, it is part of the, apparently, the definition of flood in 44 CFR.
What page are you on?
Yeah, it's the definition of flood.
Isn't that on page 6?
Mine may be slightly different, because I have some comments inserted in it, so it's changed the page numbers. But they're alphabetical in the definitions, flood. Subsection 703.05N. It's also mentioned in the floodplain development permits section under submittal requirements. And when it's discussing a RIPRAP earlier on.
Murph, do you have a question or comment related to that?
No, because I don't... Yeah, I'm lost. I have different paperwork.
That's okay. What is your concern?
My concern is, it does mention flooding, or erosion, and how does this tie in with channel migration, although I know already that we're not addressing channel migration. But it is... It is talking about erosion hazards caused by flooding.
Go to 703-6, and down at the very bottom...
Which one are you on?
Just right here. 703-6, and it's got at the bottom, N2, and it says erosion, down at the bottom, the last paragraph.
That's it. Thank you, Mike.
And I guess I'm not saying that you couldn't... Like, there actually is an older provision somewhere in 44 CFR that has an aspirational goal of FEMA eventually mapping channel migration zones. You know, maybe one day, they themselves will do it, I don't know. And, you know, erosion certainly, you know, this definition was added, you know, I can tell you, at least for flood insurance purposes, I don't understand this exactly, but if there is an erosion event or a channel migration zone event, like we had up on the three-way upstream on the Zigzag Village...
Zigzag Village, yeah.
One of those people had flood insurance. They were well out of the regulated floodplain, but there was something to do with the fact that their foundation was damaged by erosion, and they were able to make a claim, so.
And that home was removed at the cost... It was condemned and removed.
I think those were the folks who were... Something tells me that those were the people who rebuilt and stayed, or retro...
Retro.
Yeah, of the three.
Their neighbor that had...
Two were lost, and then one was saved.
So, of the proposed amendments to 703, how many of them are actually at our discretion? Because most of this is required by FEMA, so what sections of the amendments could we actually make recommendations on?
The only one that we have identified, I mean, it's... I think if you wanted to change a word here or there, we could potentially push back. These edits are... We've done a few little housekeeping things, just because we do every time we go through something.
All these changes to the definition, I mean, they literally gave us commas. Put this in, change this. The only really issue of significance that I'm aware of, that we have any discretion on, is the critical facilities. I don't think, I'm looking at Steve and Melissa, we haven't identified anything else that they're asking us to change that's substantive, that we really have any discretion on whatsoever.
And I'm not sensing any concern from the commission around that. I may be wrong, but I don't think so. Go ahead.
So it seems to me like the concerns we've been expressing are on big issues beyond what we're looking at tonight, and that we need to be looking into our work plan for looking at that channel migration study and some of the other issues, such as the environmental mitigations that came up tonight.
Well, I think what Murph is maybe suggesting, and some of the other commenters have suggested, is that, yes, we're making housekeeping changes to 703, but perhaps we should be doing more. The problem is, we don't necessarily have the information here, nor has it been noticed in order to do that. And so I think the best course of action is for us to vote and adopt on these text amendment changes, and then we can take up, what I would, I think the best approach here would be to recommend or direct staff to review the channelization project for potential inclusion on the work plan, and make sure that's flagged, so when we, we're going to be discussing that in March, February?
February. You have a work session in February.
So early next year, that's going to come up, we'll make sure it's flagged, we can have this discussion on stream channel, the stream channelization project, which may, it sounds like it's pretty much its own separate thing, it may have some impacts on 703, and we can address that at that point when it comes up. Does that make sense to everyone? So
I have a question, Jennifer.
Yeah.
If we don't adopt the text as you proposed here, that's not going to affect the insurance? Or we will not be eligible for insurance?
So, as they have framed it to us, we have to do both. We have to adopt, we asked that question, because it wasn't clear to me why the changes to the code were linked to the maps. And the answer is, I guess, just because they have that authority. So you could choose not to adopt critical facilities, but essentially, you need to do everything else, or they are at least threatening that we will be suspended. Can I swear they're going to do that? No, but I don't think staff has any concerns about any of these edits. It feels relatively routine to us.
I don't have any concerns about the edits. What I have concerns about is, there were a number of very valid concerns that were brought up tonight by the citizens.
Sure.
And I think those need to be seriously looked at, and see if they could be implemented in here at some point in time.
Right.
So that was my concern.
Sure. Yes, and I think the work program, you know, what we do is we compile a list, and the planning commission can add to that list, and that effort starts for you in February, because you're having a work session. And then there will be a public meeting, as we've done, those of you who've been here a while, every year, for several years now, where people can come and testify about what they would like to have added, or what they like or don't like about the things on the list. And then we have to just, you know, you end up making a recommendation, these are the highest priorities. So, and that's sort of the question here. So I heard channel migration zones, I heard sort of increased environmental restrictions on rivers and streams, you know, clearly, it's beyond the scope of this project. We haven't, we have to, we will have to mount a significant public outreach effort if we are going to apply channel migration zones, because we're talking about changing, potentially significantly, what people can do with our property. And so it won't be something we do with six weeks of notice, because we have to comply with FEMA requirements. It'll be something where we need to be out in those communities, talking to them about what this means for months before we come to you.
Well, it also triggers a whole new mapping process, too.
Correct. What was that?
I would assume it also triggers a whole new mapping process.
Well, as I understand it, there are CMZ maps, channel migration zone maps, that have been generated. What there aren't, as far as I know, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong here, there are no accompanying regulations yet. So there's this zone, but what does that mean?
Right.
And we don't know the answer to that. There are other issues in that, if it means the lot's not buildable, you start talking about ballot measure 49 claims against the county for an inability to build a dwelling on a lot that was previously buildable. So there are significant legal issues that have to be evaluated. And like Murph was saying, is this really, don't, you know, the county buys people out? I don't know what ends up happening. But we're, we're a long way from being ready to bring you something with regard to that.
And I'm assuming part of the other factor is the whole lawsuit, and what implications that might have on any kind of zoning ordinance we might
As far as the Endangered Species Act?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, that's a whole other, they're kind of, again, those are even two separate things. So we've been expecting for several years, we would have to do something related to the biological opinion.
Right.
And we're still in this holding pattern, waiting for that.
Well, I think that's part of the challenge, right? Because you've got potential impacts from the biop decision, you've got ongoing development in and outside of the floodplain, which is exacerbating these problems. And so that's continuing to move forward, you know, when we don't have any regulations or other foresight to deal with it. I think that's the broader part of the problem. And the stream channelization project is one way of getting at that. But it's not clear to me, some of the other environmental and development issues that have come up tonight, which are really valid, where do they fall in our code? And how would we even get that on the work plan? What would that look like? I don't know the answer to that.
Right. Well, so we have buffers. I mean, I guess if you feel, you know, there's always the question of, are the buffers big enough? Are the, you know, are metro area standards are compliant with metro's requirements? Those were set regionally, we meet those.
Right.
Could we do more than that? Arguably, we could, we could do our own Goal V process, but essentially, that's already been done, and they're in place. There's things that could be done to streamline them. Steve could tell you all day about the intricacies of our permitting, and how that should be clarified. But the standards exist. In the rural areas, it's not as comprehensive, but there are also greater challenges out there in terms of inventorying what's out there, and making decisions about how you protect it, and who enforces that, and the vast geography, and, you know, and farm practices, and forest, you know, things we can't control. And so there's a whole layer of complexity there. But we do have buffers from fish-bearing streams that are 50, 70, or 100 feet, those have been in place since the 90s. There are exceptions, but if you can't, it doesn't render your lot unbuildable. So there are trade-offs there, if you, if your lot is not deep enough to be able to build.
So, clarifying question, on slide nine, the fish section, the 703, I think, 11? I might be wrong. Oh, 07, 7307. Was that noticed, did the postcard include that that would be talked about as a revision of the work we do tonight?
The postcard did not enumerate, I mean, you know, it did not enumerate everything that was going to, that was going to happen. I think it was a more general description about changes. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the postcard in front of me. But it clearly indicated that we were potentially restricting uses permitted in the floodplain, and then told people how they could go to see the text amendments, and who they could contact to talk about that. Yeah.
Can I ask one more question? So 703, if they had you actually delete even your modest section on fish enhancements, what are the chances that they would ever let you add substantive text to this particular portion of the ZDO and maintain your eligibility for the insurance? Or is this the only place that can be changed to address some of these concerns that are brought up tonight, been brought up tonight?
It's not the only section that can be changed. Right. We could, we could choose to regulate floodplains for different reasons than insurance. We're allowed to have higher regulations. For instance, we require elevating two feet above the base flood elevation, that's not a federal requirement. The county has made some choices to be more restrictive in certain areas. So yes, there is some latitude to be more restrictive, but the scope of, like, how far we could go before FEMA would push back, I don't know if we know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, I guess on the one hand, this, this particular ordinance, which is, there's nothing very creative about it, I admit. I mean, and basically, this started in 2011, and we didn't get our final comments, and we still don't have our final comment. Part of it is unfortunately just a time crunch issue. And so we really have more or less just been scrambling to adopt what FEMA and the state is telling us to do while we meet our deadline, so that we can essentially push this thing through, and make sure that we don't lapse in flood insurance. There's all sorts of alternative, I mean, the only time FEMA is going to push back in terms of, like, what I call natural and beneficial functions, for example, or adoption of a channel migration zone, the only time they're going to push back really is if you start adding risk. That's what they care about, whatever that might be. Other than that, I mean, there's a lot, there's certainly opportunities to augment this ordinance and others. And like I say, that's, FEMA, it's just risk. If you add risk, they're going to care. But yeah, we already do, we basically prohibit development in the floodway, we have a two-foot elevation requirement, you know, there's, off the top of my head, I'm thinking of others, but there are a number of so-called higher regulatory standards that we implement, that are beyond the basic FEMA minimum. And they like that.
As I understood from the comments that were made by folks that were making comments here, we're actually reducing the size of the floodway. And that's going to cause that portion that was taken away to be available for housing, I guess. And so you got a risk there of another house being flooded.
So, in the area that was discussed, along the Salmon River and Bridge Street area, the floodway indeed is diminishing. It's increasing in other areas. Floodways, it's a hydraulically, it's an engineering construct purely. I could go into it in some more detail if somebody would like exactly how it's modeled or calculated. Unfortunately, right now, yeah, it doesn't take into consideration habitat, it's just a logical thing that basically says, for whatever reason, they've adjusted the floodway to, for the current modeling, and they're saying, well, sure, if I put some development into this one area, that is now taken out of the floodway, and whatever else is going on, I'm still going to meet the standard of the floodway itself. So, and I wouldn't be able to, you know, like, I can't speak directly to what the model was saying there, and how it differed from what was there currently.
But the changes to the floodway come from FEMA, from the FEMA maps?
Remember, I mean, 19, late 70s hydraulic modeling, probably for the Sandy River, maybe early 80s, versus 2011 LIDAR. So, at least, it's probably more sophisticated, arguably more accurate, but indeed, the floodway decreases in some areas, so.
Decreasing the size of the floodway, though, doesn't mean that it's necessarily out of the floodplain, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So they still would potentially have to build to the standards, but it's just a lower, you know, the threshold is not quite as high. In the floodway, we don't allow new dwellings. So it does open up the possibility of building, but they still may need a floodplain development permit if they're in a hundred-year floodplain.
And if there's, well, if they were in the, they wouldn't have been in the floodway before, because you wouldn't allowed it, but now they can possibly build in that particular area that was previously in the floodway.
Correct, because the model now says it's not the floodway. And so the question is, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody here is an expert enough in that to question whether it truly is or isn't the floodway. I mean, it may be people testifying, but we certainly aren't.
Okay.
You know, right.
So this has been interesting hearing, right? Because I don't, I'm not sensing any opposition to what the staff are proposing. What's occurred is that there are other issues that have come to light that we need to address. So I think that we need to address those separately, right? So why don't we go ahead and move forward and adopt this text language? And then we can have a quick conversation about what is those, those things that are still on the table, and how do we help the county move those forward? Makes sense? So is there any other comments, questions, proposed changes that folks would like to make to Section 703 in the ZDO 275? Have we covered everything pretty well? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve ZDO 275?
I make a motion to approve ZDO 275.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We got through that. So we've got stream channelization, we've got some of these other environmental factors. Does anyone have thoughts on how to proceed with that?
Here's what I would like.
Go ahead.
I would like for, when Darcy writes up the minutes, to lay out some of the comments that were made specifically by the citizens that were here and addressed us, so that we can take a look at those and see, you know, what we would want to include in a work plan for the staff.
I would agree with that. And I actually, you know, it's, I think I would, staff could just take this as a formal comment, that we've heard testimony both on the stream channelization, as well as the constriction of the streams, as well as some of the environmental implications, and
The environmental mitigations.
Environmental mitigation standards. So as, you know, the staff is currently working on developing this work plan, do you guys feel comfortable taking a look at these issues, and making sure they're on that inventory of things that have been discussed? That way, we know it will be flagged when we take up the work session, the work program in February. I think that's probably the easiest way to move that forward. I don't know that it necessarily takes a motion from the commission, because I trust the staff are going to get that on the agenda, and we will make sure that we take some time to review that in February.
Well, there's one other point there that Jennifer mentioned. Some of those issues that were brought up may be covered in some of the other ordinances, and so if there is any, anything that covers those issues, I'd like to see that annotated on whatever document we have, this is, this is really not an issue for this, it's already been
Because it's already taken care of. Right.
Yeah, some of this is already in an umbrella of other agencies.
Right.
Yep.
Does it sound a little bit like when you said you have buffers already? From what I ever so briefly, and not even, even vaguely surface level saw on some of the mapping, that some of, some of the channel migration stuff is actually already in within the buffer zone, like, less than 100 feet of potential channel migration. So I'm just curious, as we talk about this stuff moving forward, would you need statutory guidance to be able to address and accommodate the fact that these maps exist and they impact property? Or is, or is it really just by the nature of the buffer zone you already have, partially addressed, or to what extent do we need more?
Yeah, you could have some overlap, I think, is what I hear you saying. There could be an overlap where the 100-foot buffer that we require from the Sandy River, for example, would be in that CMZ. And I don't know the extent to which those overlap. The 100-foot buffer isn't as restrictive potentially as a CMZ would be, but we don't really know that yet, because we don't know what the regulations would be.
Right.
So, yeah, but yes, that could certainly be looked at, to figure out where that overlap is.
I guess I would kind of add that, I think we want to maybe formally express our support with the program that you're currently working on, and that that continues to be a priority within the county, to move that forward on the whole channel migration issue.
It is with disaster management. I know Steve is very serious about it also.
Yeah, so I mean, it sounds like it's already got a lot of momentum, but it seems like we ought to, like, I would like to formally provide my support that that remain a priority within the county. So, because that helps get towards resolution of some of these issues.
Yes, that would definitely help, and that's why I'm rattling the cans out.
And do you see that?
You just got all your cans together.
I got all my
Man, I think that was my thought, is that the most important way to express our support for that is to make sure we get this on the work plan, right? As in, if it's not on the work plan, it doesn't matter at the end of the day.
True.
And so I think we encourage the staff to take the steps to kind of prep that for possible inclusion. And then in February, we'll have a serious conversation about how that fits in with all the other projects that are going to be on that plate, and, and understand if that's a priority, should be a priority for the county, and whether we would recommend that to the county commission.
Okay.
Right.
These meetings that happen after a flood happens are pretty ugly.
Right.
Yes, I mean, there's, if we knew this, how come we didn't do anything? So I'm trying to avoid that.
Right.
I call this pre-mortem. Post-mortem's pretty ugly.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Are there any other, I don't think we have minutes to approve?
Yes, we do.
And then schedule a review, and I think we can wrap up. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our previous minutes?
I have comments on the minutes.
Go ahead, comment on the minutes.
There's just a few typos to point out, and then one content question. So on page two, the third paragraph, somewhere in the middle, there's just an extra period. Page two, the third paragraph, somewhere in the middle, there's just an extra period at the end of a sentence, rather than per lot of record. There's an extra period there.
About two-thirds down.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Probably where the T is in draft.
Yeah. Yeah.
You guys are on a roll at catching the staff's typos tonight, let me tell you.
Where does the sentence start with? Six line, six line down, and the next sentence starts with A for another. So count six lines down, and kind of two-thirds over to the right.
Okay. And then on public testimony, number five, there's a nine instead of an open parentheses in front of Oregon City.
It's what?
Shift nine.
Number, on page three, number 13, at the end, it's saying Multnomah and Land Counties, is that Lane County?
Lane.
And then, when it goes into the commissioner discussion, the third one down, Commissioner Phillips thinks that, I think it should be thinks that? I'm sure I got that, thank you.
That's the only one I saw.
Thank you.
I thought maybe Lizzie McKenzie's, like, jersey number was nine when I saw that.
So those are the typos, and then I had one content question. For the public testimony, number 11, I believe that this testifier also explained how his clients would circumvent the proposal we were reviewing, specifically by having them just split the ownership into LLCs. I thought that was relevant to the record and should be in the minutes.
I agree with that.
Yeah, he was very clear about that.
Yeah, he was. Do you want to offer a motion to approve with your amendment?
I move we accept the amendments as noted with changes.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Do you have those changes okay, Darcy? Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
So who moved to approve?
It was unanimous with no abstentions.
No, the motion was...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike moved.
Michael's second was Louise.
No, I'm good.
I think Christine abstained.
One abstention.
She wasn't here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Christine abstained.
I abstained, thank you.
She wasn't here.
You got to speak up a little louder.
I did the aye, I did the aye contact here with staff, before she saw me.
Okay. Schedule review.
Okay, and of course, the schedule has already changed since this came out, because just nothing is static around here. January 14th, we are set. We're definitely doing a training. Nate Boderman, our land use council, will be here. I will be here, possibly Lindsay Nesbit will be here, but we'll be doing something on findings and conditions and ex parte contact and various things in preparation for your January 28th hearing. In addition, Karen Birig will be here on the 14th, just to give you a little update on this year's work program and sort of where we are on some projects. Some things that maybe aren't going to come to you, but they're still on the long-range plan, and you might be interested in an update, because I don't think the training will really take that long, and so she'll be here to do that. On the 28th, then you've got a quasi-judicial hearing for a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change. Martha, I talked to you about that a little bit at your last meeting. And what has changed is that there will be no study session on ZDO 272 that night, so it's just the one item at this point, the hearing. The reason being that we went to the board in a policy session on this. This, ZDO 272 is potential changes to the comprehensive plan policies that apply to zone changes when you're going from one single-family zone to another. So you're in, say, a 10,000-square-foot zone, and you want to go to a 7,000-square-foot zone. That's on our work program for this year, but it has some ramifications for all the work the county is doing on housing. There's a housing needs analysis going on, there's an affordable housing task force working right now. And staff's concern was, well, the odds are, we're going to come to you in a few months and tell you that the county is short X number of units of housing. And if we've already gone out and told acres and acres and acres of people in single-family zones that we're going to leave you right the way you are and not allow people to upzone, and now we have to say, well, where are we going to put this housing? It might not be the best way to approach it, that we should figure out how big the problem is in terms of a housing shortage before we start closing off options for how to address it. The board agreed, and so they've asked us to come back when we have some data from the housing needs analysis. So this project is now going to be shelved for just a few months. It's not, not indefinite. February 11th is your annual dinner and meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. So that will start early with, with dinner at 5:30. It will be here. Nothing formal, but we'll figure out something to feed everyone and kind of socialize. And then the session is slated to last until 8 o'clock. And so there will be some sort of a discussion, which we're still formulating. The board wanted to talk about kind of, sort of, long-term visioning for planning in the county, and we're going to try to give that a little bit of structure and have some, somebody here to facilitate, not me, but somebody to kind of, but we mostly want to hear from you and hear from the board and not have it really be staff-driven. But we feel like there needs to be some sort of structure, so. That's set for February 11th. And then on the 25th is the study session I mentioned on the annual work program. So we will have all the suggestions that have been submitted so far, and then you all can add to that. There'll be things that staff thinks we should do, things that the public has submitted, community planning organizations, et cetera, that we've been gathering information since November about that. March 11th, then, that at the moment now is open, because we won't be doing the hearing on ZDO 272 for the same reasons we won't be doing the study session. So at the moment, it's, March is open, but I suspect we'll end up probably, there's a couple things percolating, there's another mining application out there potentially. I think there's another zone change that's potentially out there that might come to you. So there's things that may happen. We're going to, because we're not working on this low-density residential project right now, we're shifting gears and we're going to start the short-term rental conversation, because that's on the work program for this year. There's no way that'll be ready for hearing by March, but we may be ready to do some sort of an update at that point. So I'm not ready to say that either of your March meetings are canceled, but at the moment, there's nothing scheduled. And then the hearing on the work program or the public meeting is your first meeting in April, so.
Good question.
Yeah.
On the February 11th date?
Mm-hmm.
Is that viewed as a public meeting? Is that a study session? What is that?
So it's, all of these meetings are open. Anybody can come and listen.
Yeah.
But it's like any other study session, we don't, we're not sending out special notice to try to, you know, like we do for something like this where people are coming to testify. So there's no public comment taken, but the doors are open. So certainly, if people want to come and listen, absolutely, and it will be noticed, it'll be on the board's schedule, and, you know, your meetings are posted on the website. So it's certainly not secret.
Yeah, nice.
I think that, well, I have two thoughts. One is, I think, you know, Jennifer, I talked about kind of the, in the past, we've had these pizza nights with the county commission, which have been a little less structured. And I think the goal was to have a little bit of a broader conversation about where are we going with planning in the county, so that it might provide some context as we start reviewing and adopting this year's work plan. You know, in the past, we haven't really had a longer-term vision that goes past that work plan. And I think part of the goal was to get the planning commission, the county commissioners together to start having a little bit of a longer-term conversation and see where that goes.
And so along those lines, I'd be curious to hear from the county commissioners about the Metro bond that passed, and how they see that impacting, how they, how they're going to implement that and execute that as far as housing, and if that does end up having any impacts on zoning and planning and what that looks like. I'm curious about that part.
Awesome.
And that dinner meeting, is that formal or informal?
No, it will be right here, it will be casual, it will be, I don't, I haven't talked to Darcy about food arrangements yet, but we'll be figuring that out. So if you want to put your vote in for anything, you can let us know. But no, it, it'll be casual, and you can kind of mill around and chat, and, or, you know, we'll have tables and you can sit, but no, nothing formal.
They all going to show up?